Good evening, and please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance at 6:30 in Reedfield, Maine.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you for being here at the December 9, 2019 Select Board meeting. We have a special presentation this evening, which we're delighted to make, of the Boston cane, which is given to the oldest citizen in the town of Reedfield. And unless I hear an objection from the board, I'm going to take it out of order and do it right up front. How's that sound?
Great.
Good, okay. With that, I just want to say that this is a delight to do. I will say that my background is in newspaper circulation. And one of the things you do in newspaper circulation is you think of funky little marketing gimmicks that you can come up with to tell the story of your newspaper. And so many, many years ago, the Boston cane is a result of one of those circulation or marketing endeavors. And this gentleman, basically, what was the name of the newspaper? It's right on.
The Boston Post.
The Boston Post, which is, of course, defunct now. As most, there were about six or seven papers in Boston at one time.
Were they, were we part of Massachusetts at that point?
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah, this is, yeah.
So, this...
So, he sent these canes to some 500 communities in Maine, including Reedfield. And this tradition has been going on for a very long time. So, I'm the chair of the Select Board, so I get to present this usually. But I really do want to ask my vice-chair, Chris Sammons, who has a special relationship with the recipient, to join me in presenting it and to say a few words.
All right. My mother is the sharpest woman for 93 that you'll ever run into. She's, she's an avid reader, a game player. She keeps her mind working all the time, and I hope I have her genes.
Great. Shall we read it?
Yep.
Would you like me to do that?
No.
Okay, great. So, there's that one. So, I'll just read this one, okay? This is the one I'm going to present. Let's walk right over there.
She gets to look at it, it stays in the town office.
This one stays in town office?
She won't be on camera there, Bruce, if you do that?
Yeah, that's right. We do want to get on camera somehow. If it's not...
You have her, okay. He has her, she can stay right there.
You can stay right there, Norma. We got the small camera that's spying on all of us. So, years prior to August 1909, Edwin Rosier of the Boston Post newspaper arranged for a business firm to import a large quantity of the finest ebony in Africa. He had the ebony made into canes by the J.F. Bradley Company of New York at the cost of $2,000. Probably a million dollars today. On August 2nd, 1909, Mr. Rosier sends out 700 letters towards his selectmen in towns of Maine, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, and Rhode Island, asking them to be trustees of the 700 ebony gold top canes. See the gold top right there? And what's it say on it? Reedfield, right? Yeah, it said Reedfield. I think it's in turn to the town.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Rosier stipulated the canes were to be given to the oldest citizen of the town, and at the holder's demise, the cane was to be returned to the town and transmitted to the next oldest citizen. No demise, we're not going to talk about that. Being the oldest citizen of Reedfield wishing to hold the title, the town of Reedfield is proud to award their Boston Post cane to Nora H. Grover on this ninth day, December 2019.
And this you get to look at.
I got it either.
This is going to hang in the town office.
Okay, okay. Is that, what a beautiful...
That's right up, you had your, that's right up, you had your haircut.
I'm sure we can arrange to get a replica of that.
This is her.
Yeah, okay, great. But we can arrange to get that framed or something.
Whatever you want.
Okay, sure, whatever you want.
Probably, I mean, the frames aren't much there.
Oh, you can take off my glasses.
There was your good side, Bruce.
That's right. What's that?
Zing.
That's Bob Harris, the devil.
Thank you.
Bob Harris isn't...
Thank you.
Keep it until you give it to your daughter. I think that would be a, that would be a fitting transfer. Let's get a picture of you tugging on either end.
So, now, we're going to continue with the meeting, and we let people sneak out who do not want to stay for the, for the meeting. So, I'll just kind of amble on here, saying next to nothing. And people can leave, and they're not interrupting the meeting or anything like that. Hope everybody's having a good holiday plan.
Thank you for coming. That's a, that's a big deal.
We need to get one of those for every person who gets one of those.
Oh, we need to get the nice frame.
Right.
Right, that needs to be part of the thing we give. And I think we need to start with this one.
Thank you.
Grace is going to stay.
Grace, thank you, Grace. I'm going to go ahead and take a motion that we replicate that frame and certificate and, and send it to Norma.
So moved.
So moved, second. All in favor? Aye. And the understanding would be that we do it going forward from now on?
Yes. And let's have it in time so that we can have one here, one to give it.
Give them the nice one. Or you could even take that one home and replicate it.
Sure.
Right away. Yeah. Okay, great, good. We'll move on to the minutes of the Select Board meeting of November 4th and 5th, 2019. Yes, that's the right week. So, the minutes are in your packet. Are there any adjustments or remarks or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, could I take a motion?
Move acceptance.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Again, I guess we've got a second chance at the apple here. Does anybody have any changes or anything they need to bring up in the minutes? Okay, we're all set to vote, all in favor? And the minutes are approved. We'll move on to warrants, and we'll take them in the batches as they are in your packet. So, the first warrant would be 20 and 21, and Mr. Eno is still doing the reviews?
My father must be in the room. Let's see, the total for warrants 20 and 21 is $376,396.51. The 14, 986.91 is payroll. The accounts payable line is $361,409.60. And in terms of highlights, if anybody wants a little bit of a narrative?
Go ahead and give us a couple highlights.
Okay. 2003, 09, Cushing. That's, I think we had a drainage, road drainage project that had to be completed, which is now done. There's a 23,000, come on, screen. Dumped out on me, anyway. 23,642.29, Callahan, another increment payment for Meraticook Dam.
Actually showing that on the, the check register is 24, 3.
15, 67.
Yeah.
And...
It might have been written in a couple of checks.
Okay.
Yeah, there were two checks.
So, maybe, all right.
Right.
There's one for 67.
So, I'm looking at the AP register.
So, that's the aggregate number then?
You're right, okay, I'm sorry.
We had a 4,845 accounts payable number for Maine Land Development Consultants, which was basically for the septic design layout and permitting for the firehouse, as I understand it. And as Eric tells me, that's about the end of it. It seemed a tad elevated, given the fact that we waive our fees, but this is, this is development and, I guess, state permitting, if I'm...
Okay, great, so...
If I'm heading down there. And then, of course, the 309, 199.51, RSU 38.
Great. Go ahead, if you want to move the motion.
So, I would, I would move acceptance of 20 and 21 in the aggregate as posted.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve warrants 20 and 21. The amount total is $376,300, excuse me, $376,396.51. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. And we'll move on to...
22 and 23?
We have...
Yes.
Yeah, I think we have... 22 is separate, so that's...
That's a standalone...
Right.
$47,645.18, accounts payable. It's a Cushing progress payment for winter maintenance.
Right.
And I would move acceptance of that amount, 47,645.18.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded, so the only comment I have is, winter came early.
Yes.
Yeah. So, I'm glad we, we have Cushing construction out there fulfilling our needs for the town. All in favor of that? Thank you. We'll move on to the next warrants, which is 23 and 24.
23 and 24. Ah, let's see. We have a total of 99, 149.77. Warrant 23 is 84, 705.21. There are a couple of items, A and B, which do not factor into the aggregate, which are state fees, if you want that for the record. And the, and 24 is payroll, 14, 444.56. Again, the, the aggregate is 99, 149.77. The key items in there, at least from my perspective, we made our watershed assessment payment, $7,599. A progress payment for winter road maintenance, winter work to Cushing, 27, 793.02. And the largest chunk, I didn't want to break it down into smaller numbers, but there's, the largest share of the, of the health insurance component was $6,241. And I would assume the last payment for seal coating for our crack sealing, $11,799.72. So, let me back up to get to my total number again, since my screen has gone blank. Total's $99,149.77, and I would move acceptance of those warrants.
I'll second.
So, it's been moved and seconded to approve warrants 23 and 24, an amount of $99,149.77. Any questions on the motion? I guess I would just ask for clarifications. The seal coating, that is the final payment on seal coating?
Yes, that is, and that's a, essentially everything in town that we could reasonably crack seal has been crack sealed, so we're, we're happy to have that wrapped up.
Great.
Just in time.
Just in time for the next ruin to start.
And it rained the next day.
So, all in favor? Thank you. And did you review 25 and 26?
Uh-oh.
They're sitting right here. So, they must have come in, they must have been done today.
Oh, you know, you were, you were those Friday.
Well, I, I signed the state document, but I didn't see a document for...
Okay.
So...
We'll put these at the end of the meeting, and at some point during the meeting, maybe you could give them a quick review. I didn't see anything too out of the ordinary there, but it is, it is a good-sized warrant. We might take a, a short break or something, too.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I thought that those were available.
We do, we do want to process that warrant.
I apologize if they weren't.
And I hesitate, Ralph, I don't mean to, to, how long do you normally take to do a warrant?
Well, it depends on the stack of paper. A lot of it, now that I'm familiar with it, is fairly common stuff.
Okay.
But I do like to run a finger down and things that spike out, and then you go back and look at, and you look at the attribution point, and it's, ooh, well, what's that? But I'm pretty familiar with it now, so we'll get it done tonight.
Okay. I just don't want you to feel accepted from, accepted from any board discussions or anything as a result of trying to juggle too many balls at one time. So, we'll move on to Select Board communications. Do any members of the Select Board have anything that they would like to bring up?
I do.
Thank you.
I had two projects. I did trunk and treat and Veterans Day. And I want to thank the Reedfield United Methodist Church, because they've had a trunk both years that I've done the trunk and treat, and they, and they gave lunch for the veterans. And they really do step up and are community-minded, and I want everyone to know that they're, they're very involved in Reedfield. And then I just want to wish all of Reedfield happy holidays and thank all the citizens for making Reedfield the town that it is. Thank you.
Any other members of the board? I mean, I, I think Chris said it well, so, yes, happy holidays to all. Did you have something?
I'll just make a quick comment.
Sure.
I really appreciate all the people that work here in the town office. So, for the, I don't know how many years running, I came and put all the candles in the window and hung the swags out front. And I really appreciate everything that the employees do for our town, the way they treat us as well as our citizens. And I think it's fabulous what they do with the giving tree, starting back on Election Day and then following that through to help people who are needy. So, kudos to our employees.
Absolutely.
And have we filled up, have we used all the giving trees? Good, good, good.
And then some.
Good. Oh, that's awesome.
Great. We'll move on to staff reports. Eric?
All right, I'll start off with my town manager's report and maintenance in infrastructure. And we're happy to report the final control components for the Meraticook Lake Outlet Dam have shipped. That's been the large holdup outside of the material that was in the water that had to be removed, that has been removed. So, we should be getting delivery of the actual computer and, you know, control module for that dam. Once we have that, we'll do some training, and we have a little bit of tree work to finish up this, this fall and winter. But this spring, all we'll have left is loam and seed and replanting of some trees. So, that project is very quickly wrapping up, which is a relief to everybody involved. And, you know, speaking of giving thanks and appreciation, the dam committee, Cobbessy Watershed District, Wendy Dennis, Town of Winthrop, they have all been great partners in this. And it made a very daunting project, quite approachable. And also, H.E. Callahan, who was managing the project for us, has been a good, good partner as well. So, that's, that's very good news for us, to see that coming to a close.
It's really the completion, or near completion at this point, of one of the most significant projects that the town's been involved in over a multi-year period in terms of getting it looked at, floated as a bond, and so on and so forth. A lot of engineering went into that, and a lot of voluntary engineering consultation as well.
Yeah, no, the total project was probably approaching half a million dollars when you add up all the associated fees and pre-planning expenses, so. A, speaking of large projects, a combined RFP was submitted last week for, or two weeks ago, actually, for the library RFP and the fire station RFP. So, those two projects are being looked at together this time around. There is the option for, for bidders to split them out, but our hope and expectation is that by bringing them together, we'll have value. We will only have one crane on site at one time, as opposed to two cranes at two different times, to put the trust systems in place, so that there will be some value there. So, that's been put out. We have a site visit this week, this Thursday, and the bids are due in early January with anticipated review process, and then a selection of a preferred bidder, January, I think, 21st by the Select Board. So, we have our schedule in place. Once that selection happens, we will have two or three weeks, and then we will be submitting our application to the main bond bank. So, we have all these things coming together in the, the best order, having the dollar value before we head to the, the bond bank. So, that's moving along quite well. Winter maintenance, as was noted, is ongoing. We did have a little bit of trouble with one of our Sanders on the truck, but we're taking that in for some electrical review and repair.
And that's to do our parking lots, stuff like that?
Our parking lots, yeah, yep. So, and if we have an issue with our equipment, we have our contractor. We usually just say, hey, can you swing in and take care of us? And that's done without, without an issue. The, was one other item on that. Yeah, and, and the contract work so far has been, has been great. They've been out, they've been handling some icy roads, really tricky conditions with that early cold weather and, and snow and ice. I'll say it again, the mailbox guidelines are available on the town website. If you have any questions, please call the town office or speak to myself or one of our maintenance employees. It's very important to keep your mailboxes at the right height and the right setback from the road, and to inspect your posts and hardware, because a lot of times, just the force of the snow coming off the plow blade can be enough to damage or knock over a mailbox if it's not properly set prior. So, if you haven't fixed your post, you're probably out of luck until the spring, but that's something that you almost want to consider. Moving on to the transfer station, we have one training session remaining for the operations manual. We've had two already, and I'm looking forward to getting that session wrapped up. I met with a representative from KV cog onsite to talk about the facility, the operations, and areas they might be able to help us with, and we have several areas where we expect they can give us some, some resources, and we can work on things. We've been talking about a, a smaller scale hazardous waste collection, also talking about having them review our operations manual for future iterations and to help with submission to the DEP if there's any, any need for that. So, the board did ask that we work more with KV cog, and we've got a couple of instances tonight where we're pursuing that. The new tenant building is fully electrified, including a heater and some nice new LED lights on the inside and outside. And that building should be up by the end of the year. We have our maintenance staff doing some insulating and interior finishes to make it fully, fully habitable. Brush and wood chipping are complete, so now we have a nice clean lot for the, for the winter season to plow snow through. The, the backhoe was sent off for repairs, and we did find that there were some extensive old and new front-end damage. And so, that raised a lot of questions and triggered a lot of activity on our part to look at options. Right now, we're looking at several, everything from just patching and repairing what's there to get us through for another year, to a full replacement with a new piece of equipment. I expect we'll land somewhere in the middle, more towards the repair side of things, but that is not final. But I just wanted to let the board know that we are looking at options. In addition, we are approaching this and using the opportunity to analyze the density of material going off uncompacted versus what we send off compacted, and try to figure out what the value is of doing that, because it's our belief that that activity of compacting the equipment or compacting the MSW, if needed, in the demo can or compacting demo can with just furniture and things, the metal can as well, that's what's been contributing to a lot of that fatigue on the metal. And also trying to lift the equipment up off the ground to get a higher angle on it. Those are things that are contributing to this.
Do we, do we have options there to, to send that off non-compacted?
Yes.
We do, yes.
And it was, is that just more pickup fees?
It's more pickup fees, so we would just, for demolition and metal, which are the ones that are mainly compacted, shingles get a little bit of work, but not much. Those go off in open-top roll-off containers, so if we're compacting and adding 20% density, then that's what we save, every, every sixth trip is free, or something like that. So, that's what we're looking at to, to analyze, because the cost of the equipment of that fatigue...
Is that our only use of a backhoe?
Can be extensive. It's not, but we, we also use it for lot clearing in the wintertime if we have very heavy snow. But the other main uses are brush pile and construction wood, pushing that stuff around, yeah.
Please.
In terms of the compaction issue, follow-up on what Eric is saying. It's good to try to get as much in the can as you can, but when you're really reaching over, you're, you're, you're putting a lot of stress on the outriggers and the booms. I think the idea of a protocol of maybe when the can is about half-full, you do some level of compaction, because the cost of the haul is fairly expensive.
Right.
So, if you can diminish the number of calls for hauls, you'll, you'll be better served. But I think maybe we're a little over, overly aggressive in terms of trying to, trying to do the right thing, and the machine paid the price for it. Because ideally, a backhoe is not a compaction machine to begin with.
Right.
And the follow-up to, to the brush pile push-up, you ask it to do a lot there, too, but it's not an articulating front-end loader either. And it can only push so far, so as long as we're not calling in that monster machine, that track-modded machine with its own picker and, and pusher, we should just make sure that we don't try to overextend the capabilities of the machine. And, and probably, an aggressive patch on the booms and a change in the bucket is, is probably going to serve us well for, for the next two or three years or so, until it's time to maybe look at what kind of a machine we really need up there. It's a multipurpose piece of equipment, and it doesn't do the optimum job for any of them.
I just want to add a quick comment. I think, is our cost of hauling the same as it is for the MSW?
It's, it's different. We, because it's an open-top, we, we have, and it's also a different hauler.
Okay. But is it running in the $200 range?
It's running in the $200 range, yeah.
Per can?
Per can? So, if you're saving, every sixth trip, you're saving $200, and the cost of this repair is going to be low end to high end, Eric?
15, 20,000?
I say we don't compact anything.
Yep.
Because 15 to 20,000 versus 200...
But look at that over four or five years, that, that, that's the fact of the way it's here on the machine.
I believe there's a balance. I think you're, you're both right about that, yeah.
But we've been, and I don't want to micromanage, manage this here, but we've been repairing this machine to the tune of $5,000 to $8,000 every year. And so, if there's something we can use it for, like you said, you know, reevaluate the whole use, so that's what I've been talking to Eric about, is let's just, I don't want to really throw 20,000 into something that we're only going to keep for a couple of years.
Can we run another can? I mean, there, there is material that goes in there that is relatively flat, or, you know, doesn't really need a lot of compacting, and then you get somebody who brings a wire cage, you know, that's, that's where, that's what you end up compacting, is stuff that's odd-shaped.
Right.
And, and outsized construction debris.
Right.
So, I guess what I'm echoing is what Ralph was saying, that my hope is that, Eric, you do what you said, and let, before we do replacement, let's, or repairs, let's really look at this thing. And really, let's make a decision if that's the best way to use, 15 to 20,000 dollars, or would that be better spent in a down payment on a newer, not new, or a different piece of equipment?
Yeah. So, the, I guess I'll summarize it, the analytics is a big part of this, looking at the cost analytics as well as the operational analytics, and making sure that we're doing the best we can with both of those things. So, yeah, operational training, limitations on, on how that equipment is, you know, not allowing it to be lifted off the ground. It was amazing, I went to the Caterpillar website to look at what they had, and they had a special section on material recovery facilities and landfills and transfer station operations. And one of the first things they said on the list was, I mean, not the first, but five or six down probably, was, make sure you do the analysis on compaction. Is it worth it because it's hard on equipment? So, it's not, not a new idea, but we're going to be doing those things. So, it's not a, not a new idea, but we're going to be doing those things, that analysis to make sure it's the right step. You know, and it is, it's a 20-year-old piece of equipment that only gets 250 hours of use a year, so Ralph's absolutely right. It's a jack of all trades, master of none, and not used to its full capacity, so it, time is as much of an enemy as, as use. So, I mean, if we fix it, we should be able to get another $2,500, $2,500 hours out of it, but that's 10 years down the road, and then the equipment will be 30 years old. So, there is, there is definitely some review that needs to happen.
Trade-offs and considerations-
Yeah, yeah. So, I expect we'll do, likely do a repair and get several years-
Especially as the recycling and waste processing equation changes-
Yeah.
-to make sure we have the right machines in place to deal with that moving target, which is a tough thing to do, given the level of expense for these pieces of equipment.
I'm just having visions of the holder. We kept thinking that it was the right thing to do to keep repairing it, repairing it, and then it wasn't.
Get a 20-year-old machine, you're going to put serious money into it at some point, and some of this may have to do with how the next road maintenance contract plays out. You might not want to get rid of this, you might want to make it part of the equation for a bid, for pushing up sand and salt. You don't put a new machine in the salt and sand shed. This might be an option to offset some of those costs, which are on the high side in terms of the bid per mile. Might mitigate, but that's, you're getting deep into the weeds.
Yeah, and I think, I think what we've done now is we've given Eric the sense of the board's-
Fix it.
...range of thought on that, so, would you wrap up your report then?
Uh, yes.
You could say no, I suppose.
No, I'd like to, I'd like to. So, we have, we did install additional lighting at the transfer station, and we have more planned, so I want to thank Catherine for encouraging that activity. Additional comments, I'm very pleased to announce that we have Melissa Small hired as our new librarian. That was a very quick and pleasant process. We had several good candidates. Melissa is a Reed Field resident, very well qualified, and has the positivity and energy that you would absolutely expect to see in a, in a first-rate librarian, so we're very happy to welcome her to the town of Reed Field staff. And we have an employee meeting and training scheduled for December 19th. I like to just put this out there so that the board and the public know that we do periodic, and I'd say at least twice a year, sometimes three or four, trainings with staff to make sure that we're all on the same page. Announcements, dog registrations are due on December 31st in order, or, excuse me, December 31st, in order to avoid a $25 late fee, so get your dogs registered. Christmas and New Year's holiday hours, because they both fall on a Wednesday, which is probably about the worst time of week for each, we, beyond having to take two weeks off to stay with the kids, we, we will be closed Wednesday afternoon, so eight to noon on Wednesdays, Tuesday, excuse me, that's right, Tuesday, and close Wednesday. So, both the transfer station and the town office will be open from eight to noon on Tuesday, closed in the afternoon, closed all day Wednesday. And I do want to thank everybody for that effort with the Giving Tree. We did a great job, as always, and the community really comes together and gets fantastic gifts for folks in town who might need a little bit extra, so it's, it's awesome. Moving on to my treasury report, this is for October. We have yet to complete the check reconciliation for November, so I, with these early in-the-month meetings, I've been reporting a month behind, so I'll just say that things appear to be on track. We are continuing with our audit and budget processes, and check reconciliation was completed through the October 31st, and there was no unusual activity observed. As far as the month of October, we have revenues that are a little bit down for the month and for the year, or, excuse me, for the month, but then up for the year, and they're down primarily because of real estate payments, and we regularly see fluctuations in real estate payments, depending on when the due date is and when we submit the tax bills for payment. So, that's a pretty normal fluctuation, and really, as expected, we're actually up by about, you know, 3% for the year for revenues, or, for tax payments. For major net revenues, we are seeing additional increases in transfer station. This is the third month in a row, maybe even getting into the fourth, where we've seen a 25-plus percent increase in revenues collected from fees, and this month in October was actually 37%, and I expect that November will likely be the same. We've had great success in implementing appropriate collection of fees.
So, let me just ask a question. So, that's better fee collection on similar-sized stream as before?
Exact same, I mean, there's been very little change-
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Yep, and we did look at that and make sure it wasn't just an anomaly, because it's been a-
Right.
It's quite a, quite a change. We do have, for the month of October, compared to 2018, a small reduction in net revenues, but again, about 3% increase year-to-date, which is what we would expect. Expenditures, we have some large expenditures and capital improvements that really appear to be an outlier. However, we also see a reduction sizable in debt service, and those two things together really show one of the strategies that we took last year, and again this year, in budgeting to try to balance things out. We are moving money, in many cases, out of debt service and into capital expenditures, which we found to be a more responsible way to approach things. So, that, it's nice to see it actually reflected in the, in the budget numbers and the, and the revenue expenditure numbers, so.
With the proviso, excuse me-
Yeah.
-that, that our undesignated fund balance can handle that kind of transfer-
Right.
-and we're not shortchanging ourselves and finding a fund balance down the line where we have a problem and the mill rate suffers as a result.
Yeah, we keep an eye on that.
Yeah, so, those, those are the major highlights for October. Like I said, everything looks to be on track, and the year-to-date stuff is a lot more stable than the month-to-month, but that's always the case. So, any questions on that, or anything else in my reports?
Any questions for Eric?
No.
Thank you for two very complete reports, appreciated.
Not for Eric, Mr. Chairman, but if you would like to clean up that-
Oh, are you ready?
I am.
Fire away. So, the warrants are 25 and 26?
25 and 26. Aggregate total, 417,130,48. The employee portion is 32,166,53. I would move acceptance of same. It looks like, again, the, the big ticket item is the 309 and change for the, for the school district. We made a first-part payment, which is, Eric's smiling, and we've talked about this from time to time, $12,398,08. That's the other, that's, that's a big spike. From my understanding, we're getting close to the end of our, our financial obligation to this, and then hopefully, it will bear, bear dividends to us after the fact. Stay tuned. The other one is 27,793,02, the cushion, which is a progress payment for winter maintenance. So, I, those are, those are the, those are the big-ticket guys. All the rest of it is, is pretty much business as usual, and the big hitters, waste management for hauling and disposal. So, as I say, I would, I would move acceptance of the warrant to 25, 26, for 417,130,48.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve warrants, 24 and 25, or 25 and 26?
Uh, 25 and 26.
25 and 26, in the amount of $417,134.48. Is there any discussion?
Excuse me? $130.48.
$130.
$130.48.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I guess-
Is there any discussion?
A lot of other people have to sign.
Yeah, we'll, we'll send that around to be signed. Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. Thank you for doing that on the fly.
It's getting to be, it's dangerous to say this publicly, Gregor, but it's almost like rote now, once you, once you know what the cash flow situation is, but the anomalies jump right off at you after you've done it a little bit.
Wait till you've been here a few years, they'll really come easier.
We'll move on with boards, committees, commissions, and departments. I want to thank the age-friendly committee for their minutes from September 18th of 2019, the trails committee minutes for September 24th and October 22nd, the library board minutes of October 2nd, 2019, and I would like to mention that they do have the annual tree lighting on Friday, February 6th, coming up, this, this week.
December 6th.
December 6th. Did I say February?
We did, and it was-
Oh, it's gone by.
It was fantastic.
It was.
Forget anything I've said tonight. So, I was not there, obviously, okay?
It was cold.
I'm sure we'll see, we'll, we'll see that reported in future minutes. And the cemetery committee minutes of October 16th and November 1st, 2019. Public communication, are there any members of the public that would like to address the board? Grace, please.
I'm not sure if this is where I should ask a question, but-
This is a good place to ask a question.
Well, you're going to be talking further down on old business about the traffic and parking ordinance?
Yes.
And my question is, is that new ordinance going to include the problems with the parking in front of the post office? As snow piles up on the side, they're parking further out in the road, and it's, I almost got hit again last week trying to come out of there. You nose out, and, you know, just a little at a time.
I think the answer is no, the parking ordinance doesn't deal with that particular place. However, one of the things we're going to be talking about later tonight is the comprehensive plan to some degree, just to kind of, an overview, and we recognize that we need to address the parking situation outside of that, and we have talked about either a bump out, or, or something to actually eliminate the parking in front of the post office. I'm as guilty as anyone else as pulling up there and parking, but I can see where, you know, using the side access is a much better solution. So, it is definitely on our mind. The traffic ordinance isn't really, the traffic ordinance really doesn't control necessary-
It says traffic and parking.
Yeah, it does say traffic and parking. So, it, it would, it would regulate how you park in town, but not necessarily say that the space is going to be here or not, and it might also regulate the distances from corners and things of that nature. So, it's, it's on our radar very much.
Okay, just keep it on the radar, please, before-
Well, and don't hesitate to-
Remind us.
Remind us as well, because-
I have before, but-
Keep us on task.
Well, and I noticed the day that it snowed, that didn't get plowed at all during the snowstorm, and so people were really, like a full car width out from the railing.
Wow.
And so, that's, now that it's been plowed, there's just a ridge there, and it's, you're still within, you know, a safe distance back from the road, but it's still, that's still not a good place for pulling out.
And it is, just to clarify, that's a state plowed road-
It's a state right of law.
Not, not our road.
It is, and I don't know that the state ever drops the plow there.
I doubt they push back there.
No, they, they don't stop and do a little cleanup there.
No, no, no.
Yep.
And they've told us it's our problem.
Well, they told us we could do it if we wanted, correct?
And I thought we put it in the budget, so that's something we can look for.
We did, yeah, we have, we have $25,000, excuse me, allocated for that project. I expect some of that will be for engineering, but yeah, we do need to get with DOT and, and get that project moving.
There's a coordination-
That'll happen in this, sorry, but that'll happen in this fiscal year, correct? Because we put it in for that budget?
That's the budget goal, yes. With the fire station and library, I wonder where that will land, but we'll see, we'll see.
Okay, so it could be sooner than a comprehensive plan issue.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm just saying a comprehensive plan references that.
Yes.
But let's, let's go on, Fran?
Fran Zambala, Church Road. Being that this subject is being discussed again pertaining to the post office area parking, I'd just like to reiterate, I know I mentioned this way back, that the access to the post office, I think, needs to be addressed maybe by the age-friendly committee. I, for one, my wife especially, found it very difficult to access in and out of the post office, and for those reasons, or that reason, we opted to cancel our post office box, set up our own mailbox at the end of the driveway, because of the winter access. I think it's precarious, dangerous, especially for older people. I just think something needs to be addressed, or something needs to be done to address this problem, especially for older people, and I think, as I mentioned probably a year ago when I was up here, that the traffic coming through between the driveways, something that needs to be addressed, because as I was stepping off the post office ramp on that side, if I wasn't holding on to that railing, I would have been hit by a car coming through there. And I, I just think it's something that needs to be made aware and maybe addressed that-
Yeah, we, we get into some private property issues there. I mean, I'm with you, I mean, I would rather see that alleyway, and that's really what it is, be a one-way.
Right, exactly.
Entrance only, probably.
Yeah.
Because it's coming out that is really the issue.
Well, because it's privately held, management of that traffic-
We've had people tell us, they really would like to see that whole thing paved. Well, I would too, but you know, that's, you know-
And it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be used for parking.
It's a gravel lot, and the potholes show up the day after rape, what's the, what's the gravel down?
Well, I, I think, you know, Fran, I mean, that's, again, it's good to get it back on our radar that we need to talk about that, and especially before somebody's actually really injured there.
I know it's private property, but maybe, and I know we can't discuss it too long here, but maybe the town could put up some signage about, or ask the post office to do it, about, you know, watch step, traffic coming in both directions?
Well, you know, actually, I would like to know who owns what private property there.
And I think that's a great way for us to do.
I think Ray owns the whole thing.
Okay.
Outside of the Mason's Lodge, they own the footprint and a little bit of-
Only the footprint of there.
Ray owns the lot.
Yep.
Okay.
And I think he would like some help as well, but I don't think he wants to be the enforcer. It's, it's beyond his capabilities.
Sure.
But it's working together with-
Yes.
-the town maintenance, the town office, the select board, the age-friendly committee, concerned citizens, we should be able to put something together to make this a better situation.
Yeah.
And to more publicize that there is the ramp on the other end of the building with the handicap spot there, and so that we can make sure that anybody going there knows that you can park over on that side and walk up the ramp, and I think the post office does a good job of keeping that cleared in the winter. I'm not certain, I don't use it often, but-
Fairly.
Okay, well, great. Fran, thank you. So, there's, I think, that's an area we may want to address, Eric.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll talk to DOT again-
Maybe I'll touch base and follow up with you on that.
Yeah, we can talk more, but I'll definitely follow up with DOT again, and also with the Mason's Lodge that owns the building.
Thank you. We'll consider the resignation of Donna Witherell from the library board of directors, and that is in your packet, could I have a motion in regards to that, please?
Accept with regret.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to accept that resignation of Donna Witherell, and I thank you for her service while she was on the library board trustees. All in favor? Thank you.
Does this get posted, or?
It will get posted, yes.
Yeah, it will be posted.
Yep.
Once we accept it, then it becomes a vacancy, then it's posted.
Yeah, I just want to point out, Bruce, that Joel Greenwood is here from KVCOG to talk about comprehensive planning. If we wanted to jump, if it was the will of the board to...
And I'm also thinking Fran is here because we're going to talk about Torsey Pond Dam and Bridge as well.
Yes.
That would be wise, a wise guess, right? So if you...
Only brought one hat.
If you would like, I'll move 2052, 20052, and 20053 in that order up above Old Business, and then we'll... Well, let me ask you this, is Kenavik Wealth coming?
Uh, yeah, no, he is not, he has...
Okay, we put him to the left, he just got to the last part of the agenda, fine. No problem.
Are we still waiting for Keith to show?
I thought he'd be here by seven.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, you want us to do the, switch those around?
Well, that was one of the reasons I'm here.
Okay.
Because I am a resident, Keith isn't, and I just want to express our gratitude for working with us on this project. Because I think it is a very worthy project that will benefit both the town and the property owners of Torsey Pond.
Well, let's, let's go ahead and take it now, 052. And so in your packet are the bid pieces for the Torsey Dam and Bridge repair. And I guess I want to just say right up front, this is a collaborative approach through, of the town, which has some responsibility that carries under the bridge there and so on and so forth. And the dam itself, which the Torsey Pond Association has. And that collaboration, when it came time to repair the dam and also repair some structural interface of the towns, it made sense to put them together and try to do that project together and benefit from doing them at the same time, if you will. And hopefully that's yielded the kinds of results we've wanted. We are just starting to talk about the Torsey Pond Dam.
He made it, there he is.
So Eric, there were three bids, can you go ahead and tell us a little bit of background really quickly? And the recommendation, which was, I think was for Callahan?
Sure, yeah, so...
Could you just explain the 5,000 and the little loopy thing?
Sure, that's my shorthand. So I will say this is the second time that we had put this project out to bid. The first time, we had less interest and fewer bidders. And the one bid that appeared viable was actually, numbers were transposed, so we really didn't even consider that one a responsive bid. So with that turnout, we opted to try again. We did change the scope a little bit, we added some work, removed additional, other pieces of work, including some of the hand-laid riprap that we could do in-house with volunteers. But we did make adjustments and put this out to bid. We had a lot more interest the second time around and slightly better numbers. Although it still turned out to be a fairly expensive project, much more so than we had anticipated. But working in the water with a temporary dam is, is always, I think, going to be expensive. And we're, we're finding that to be the case here. So we did have three bids come in, and the apparent low bid would be HE Callahan. And I will identify these numbers. We had three different categories of work, general, Town of Reedfield, and Torsey Pond Association. And when we started this, we had agreed that we would split the work for components that benefited or were necessary for both of our components of this. Because as you know, Town of Reedfield owns to within about a foot of that dam. The concrete structure underneath the roadway, the railings, the footings, all of that is the Town of Reedfield. And then the dam is actually owned by Torsey Pond Association. It's contiguous structure, the concrete's connected, so we have an impetus to work together on it. So we agreed that the, those costs, those general costs would be split 50-50. And of course, the Town of Reedfield is responsible for work on our component, and same for Torsey Pond Association. So those numbers represent the ratios of each of those two categories. And the squiggly points to the sum of those areas. So for, for us, and actually for Torsey Pond Association, HE Callahan is the apparent low bid. And my recommendation is to go with that bid and work with HE Callahan. I'll say quickly that we have reserved $15,000 specifically for this project. And so we will need to pull the remainder out of our road reserves, and I did some review of that. Some of this is back of the envelope because we have our balances through the end of last fiscal year, June 30th of 2019. But we have a whole nother year of expenditures and revenues to, to consider. So my expectation is that we would be starting this project with around $190,000 in the reserve, including that which had already been set aside. And so expending the $61,000 and change would bring us down to a rate of about $130,000, which is actually not that far from what we've had as a rolling balance over the past four or five years anyway. So I think that's a reasonable number, it leaves a healthy balance in our reserve accounts. And it will accomplish important work for this bridge, the dam, and many, many waterfront property owners in the Town of Reedfield.
Great.
I think we also talked briefly about looking for some cost savings in terms of looking for options for site mobilization. If we can find enough butter who might, might help us, we might be able to lower that cost to some extent. And some of the, some of the stone and tracking pad issues, we might be able to, we might be able to shave some marginal amount off of that cost.
Yeah, yeah, so once we do determine a preferred bidder, we can then negotiate and try to find value.
I'd like to add a comment. I attended, I think, three of the dam meetings in Winthrop this summer, and HE Callahan was the principal there. They sublet out a couple, or subcontracted a couple of the tasks to specialists. They were outstanding, prompt, thorough, polite, professional.
Professional.
Did really good work on site, always kept a, a project manager on site who was very aware of past history as well as the pending issues, and was just right on and could easily talk about the current work taking place. So I, I think going with them is a really good idea.
So Keith, do you have anything you wanted to add, or Fran, about the project overall?
So are we being asked tonight to make a recommendation?
Yeah, I was, I was going to go ahead and do that.
Awesome.
So I'm going to move that we accept the bid from HE Callahan. The estimated sum is $111,996.20. That's for the total project. The town's portion of that is $61,205.80. And so my motion indicate, would indicate that we pay our share in that as planned. So that's, that's the motion? Was not elegantly stated or worded, was it?
I'll second it.
Okay. So I'm, actually, we're authorizing the town manager to proceed with accepting that bid.
And...
And that's done in collaboration with the Torsey Pond Association, who submitted a letter saying that that was their preferred bidder as well, and that they wanted to work with us continually with that bidder.
And is it my understanding that that would be for work, I didn't read all of the proposals. Does it have a date for when this work is going to begin?
Yes.
Which is?
After Memorial Day, Labor Day, I always get them confused.
Labor Day.
Labor Day.
It's, it's a fall 2020 project, right?
There's a saying with vendors, saying that that was just an assumption on our part because the, we get the lake a little lower, maybe some coffee on the ice here. But that if they didn't have issue with height of water, they could start one sooner.
As long as it didn't impact the state launch area, correct, for the fishing?
You know, and obviously we can't lower the lake until after Labor Day because then it causes a big fuss.
Okay, so it's not going to take place in the current fiscal year, but we're authorizing the money out of reserves. So it doesn't matter if it's in the current year or the next year. I just want to make these points clear, so if someone comes back later and says, so where was that funding coming from? It's coming from reserves, so from our point of view, we're going to dedicate that money by passing this motion.
That's correct.
So that whenever you folks are ready to have the work done and have your money in hand, it can be done. Is that my understanding?
So as the budget process unfolds, this pro, this project, by virtue of our vote, is paid for.
Yeah, as you would say, it's encumbered, right? It's not technically, but it's similar to that, yeah.
Well, it's not encumbered, but it should not be a line item that reflects an additional expense. What it will show is the transfer of funds from the surplus, the undesignated fund balance, to this line.
Right.
So this particular budget item for the next fiscal year will not have a direct fiscal impact on the mill rate for the next year. Correct assumption?
Correct, I think so, yes.
Anything coming out of reserves?
Well, I mean, that's correct, yeah, no, it's correct.
I just, I want to make sure that everybody understands that...
It's correct insofar as, you know, there's, we could have had another use for that money.
Right, indeed.
Obviously, this is in, the best use.
And if there's another compelling use, that might have an impact on the mill rate.
Then we might have to raise some money, right?
Yes.
But that's not our intent, really. So, did I, did I draw a second?
Yes, I did.
You did, and then I guess I just have one question. Do you folks know where you're going to be at fundraising-wise for doing the project?
Oh, we'll be there, $30,000 as of today.
Amazing.
Very good.
That's fantastic, what a great, great association you must have.
Don't allow pushing.
Have you visited your friends in Mount Pleasant?
Mount Vernon.
Oh, Mount Vernon, right, excuse me.
Great, let's go ahead and vote on this motion, then. All in favor, the motion is dated. Thank you.
Great work, you guys are all set.
Thanks.
Well, we thank you for your cooperation in doing the project.
Well, you know, we kind of had to after we did one lake in town, we couldn't really say no to the other one.
And, and you know, your, your summer people are just as important.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Most of them are paying taxes here, not Winthrop.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Keith.
Let's move on to comprehensive plan goals and planning process. And I'm going to actually turn this over to Eric. Basically, we have, the comprehensive plan was, the current comprehensive plan is dated 6/11/19. And within your packet were some of the goals that were listed in the comprehensive plan. And these goals had a check-through last year. And commentary and notes on that check-through were made on both short-term, midterm, and long-term plans.
Great.
And we may want to take a look at a couple of those tonight to make sure that anybody on the board who wanted to mention a couple of them or ask a question about a couple of them could do so. But we also wanted to talk about the date of the comprehensive plan and how frequently it should be updated and looked at and so forth. And so for that, Eric's given us some additional information on KVCOG services. And Joel, is it Joel?
It is.
I've met you a couple of times at a couple of KVCOG events, very briefly, you probably don't remember me. But in any case, I'm going to turn this over to Eric and, and to use Joel at the microphone if needed.
Sure, yeah, I'm hoping we can get, have some of that time. So I'll start with the goals. We did go through these and make adjustments. This table format is modified from the iteration we had a year ago with some, some changes. But very little has actually changed because many of these goals are ongoing. And that's the part that's probably the trickiest to, to define is, of course, we've made project progress with, with age-friendly initiatives and public education. And of course, we've made progress with maintaining and investing in our infrastructure. But to put some of those, and I think most notably, maintaining the integrity of our comprehensive plan and the character of our community, we've gone to great lengths to try to encourage and protect what we have. That being said, it doesn't, doesn't all fit in a, a simple table. And so even though there is not a lot of change from 2018 to 2019, a lot of what we're seeing is ongoing activity in goals that never really will be completed. We will always be working on things like maintaining the integrity of our neighborhoods. That's always going to be out there. And I think that what I've seen, and I hope the board can comment on some of their observations, is that we have made a lot of accomplishments. And this review encourages dialogue and discussion and feedback from the, from the community. And also gives the board an opportunity to think about what directions they might like to take the community. I see a lot of similarities between the goals that are established and worked on actively by the select board through their planning process, their goal-setting process. And that's not by accident, the board often looks at and considers comprehensive plan goals in setting their own. They're also fairly well-aligned, the, the direction of this board and past boards really has been in line and consistent with the planning directions that the community has set through the comprehensive plan. So I see a lot of unified direction, I see a lot of progress. And I'd say that the, the one area that is mentioned over and, over and again, I think rightly, that we may want to look at would be housing, and particularly age-friendly housing. That's a little bit of a tricky situation because the, the, there are many solutions. It isn't just, and it won't be just, well, go core to developer and have them come and put an eight-unit or a 20-unit development here. It might be changes to our policy, changes to our zoning ordinances, changing to the fee structure for, for permitting in order to encourage accessory dwellings and other things that can be an alternative to what can be a very cumbersome and involved process for a small community. So there's a lot here, and I appreciate the board being willing to take a few minutes every year to review these and discuss them. And I think that we're doing a good job, and I want to continue to push forward with things that are, that are of value to the community. So that's, that's my summary of, of the goal sheet. It is about 12, getting on 10 years out, and we do need to update. But like I said, I think the more things change, the more they stay the same. My feeling is that when we do this update again, we'll see a lot of people saying, I like and appreciate the character of Reedfield, I like our rural residential feel. And they're going to want to keep it that way. But again, we need to go through the exercise, and it's very important to go through and get that broad outreach. And that's what the comprehensive plan process really is, aside from the analytic side of pulling in data to make informed decisions. So that's my piece, and I wanted to see if the board had any comments on the goals that I can modify or focus on.
Yeah, I, I would start right off and endorse the age-friendly housing as some sort of... It's an area we really need to explore much further out, in, in my mind. I did want to mention that, I mean, as you look through this, it's interesting that we talked about access in front of, improvements in front of the Masonic Hall, and that was rate number one on a short-term goal. We did actually put money in the budget to address that. We're talking tonight about the traffic and parking ordinance, bingo, it's right there. We're doing our second reading of that tonight. And of course, we're, we were... And of course, we're, we were talking about Torsey's Stand, but as far as Morana Cook's Stand goes, that is a very significant step forward in terms of maintaining the character of the community around Morana Cook Lake, which is one of our jewels in town. So that's, I think, very important. So just, just those items alone kind of jumped out at me in taking a look at this. However, it, let's talk, well, first of all, did anybody, did something else jump out at anybody else before?
Ralph had a comment, I have one, Chris, I don't know.
Let's, let's all go.
Well, I, I just, I think Eric's nailed it in terms of process and expectations. I've done a bunch of these things, and I suspect all of you have as well. Sometimes you wonder why you're doing, because a lot of times after the, after the, the public meetings and all the rest of it is done, everybody says, "I like it just the way it is." Why are you, why are you changing things? And I don't, I don't think the, the process is because we want to change, it's just we want to anticipate and be in a position to accommodate and do this within a framework that has a bias.
Verification has value.
And, and that's why we do these every 10, 12 years, whatever statute requires and whatever state you're living in. It also has financial ramifications because if you don't have one, you can get penalized in terms of aid that's available to you. And when you go to court, your plan isn't, your plan isn't up to date, and there are changes in land use that don't, that don't match up with your plan of conservation and development or whatever you want to call it, you're behind the eight ball right out of the gate. So it's a mandatory endeavor that can produce a positive outcome. It's bureaucratic to a point that can be mind-numbing, but I've read it over, and I, I can't see any reason why we wouldn't want to give it our best effort.
Thank you. Catherine?
In looking at the chart.
Thank you.
I am thinking that I might like to see, a, a lot of things are ongoing that aren't in the ongoing section. So I think when we do the revision, we need to be careful about what we put in short-term, midterm, long-term, and ongoing. That some of those things that are in short, mid, and long-term need to be put into ongoing because we found that they didn't work in those ranges. And then in looking back through the chart, we've completed the vast majority of the goals in this plan. And so I think it's really important to have an update so that we can say, hey, if people say, if people, meaning the entire town who chooses to come out and be involved, and then those who vote the plan in at the end, if they say, hey, we don't need a whole lot of work done, then we'll have a long list of ongoing goals. And if it comes to light that there are some things that need attention that we haven't been able to get to, then let's put those as goals and, and set some timelines on them. And I think that's the value of, of the report. And it, it really does give us a basis for where to go. And it's not just us, that, these are the select board goals that we've listed here, but there were goals for other major players in the game, for town office staff, for, especially for the planning board, and then I think for some other committee groups. And so it doesn't have, it's not just on this end of management. So I, I think it's a great proposal in having read through it, and I, I'd like to see us maybe approach this more as a revision, rewrite than a whole new, let's start at the beginning. And it seems that that's what the proposal is, that KVCOG wants to collect data and have us enhance what we already have, so that this doesn't become a gigantic project that consumes all of the town office staff time for some great length of time, and I'm done.
And I, I just wanted to make the point that number four, finance open space acquisition, was voted down by, at a town meeting, so.
Pretty quickly, the plan was, yeah.
Impact fees, but that doesn't mean that we walk away from being sensitive to preserving chunks of open space where it makes sense to do it with other mechanisms.
Right. But I mean, we are going to be governed by what they want to vote in and what they don't want to vote in.
Right, and that has to be reckoned. And so that's why that chart is really useful, because it says voted down by town meeting. So there's no point in doing it right away again. You can do it at some time interval, and maybe that's some information KVCOG can give us is, you know, if something isn't accepted, do you revisit it again before you rewrite the plan? Is there kind of a suggested like?
Has it changed, has the atmosphere changed in the town?
That was one of the questions that I had about the end game and the approval process. I'm assuming maybe the planning board has to ultimately bless it, but does it ultimately go to a town meeting? Does the town have to, does the town have to approve it? It does, all right. Are there incremental approval steps along the way?
No, there's just, um, there's just one, there'd just be one town vote.
All right, but, but you wouldn't go to the town without saying the planning board likes it, the Conservation Commission likes it, and all of the other people who have fingerprints all over it like it?
Right, and there's a, there's a public input component to it as well.
But the bottom line is, it goes to a town meeting.
Right.
Okay.
So I think we are starting to get into the discussion about the, the comprehensive plan update proper.
Right.
And so that, that is the next natural step. Catherine, did you have anything else?
I just wanted to say that I don't know that this, I think we've been talking about this for some length of time, but David Trenell was here a meeting or two ago and was asking us about this. And so David, I have a feeling you might be watching us, I hope this is of interest to you, and other folks who have been really pushing for some changes, that here we are addressing something that we've been asked to do, so.
Let's invite Joel up to the podium, if we would, and maybe you can give us just a thumbnail overview of this proposed scope of work for a 2022 comprehensive plan, and dare I say, update? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Certainly, um, yeah, I mean, the, the proposal that we put together is, it's, it's fairly boilerplate, just trying to outline the process of what we would go through to perform an update for the town. It's, I mean, first off, it's nice to hear that this is still, the old plan is still being referenced and used as a guidance document even this late, you know, 10 years after its initial adoption, which is, it's really heartening to hear because, I mean, often some of these plans can just sit on a shelf and gather dust. So it's always, it's always heartening to see that a, a community still uses it as a guidance document at select, select board meetings and so on. So we basically kind of break it down into three major components for the update. The first would be an update and revision of all the inventory data, making sure that the town has all the most up-to-date information for which to move forward from. Town can't really, can't really decide how it wants to move forward in the future until it knows exactly where it is. So a reasonable update of all that data would be the first step in terms of the major sections of the planning, comprehensive plan process. The, the, it's nice that the, the, the existing plan or the old plan, as it would be in this case, is, is not too far in the past, it's, it's only 10 years, so some things will be, need to be updated. Others, we could probably use a lot of the same basic template and, and save a bit of time and resources on that. The second major component that we went through is public participation. So once you've got all the information about where the town currently stands, and, and that, that would include a, a review, although it seems like it's already actively happening, a review of the old plan in terms of what is, what is still applicable, what is still being worked on, what maybe didn't work. Like you say, things that actually got voted down at town meeting, which is, which is interesting, that may have been proposals in the old plan. And again, it's nice to hear that this is probably already pretty much being done, as you, you, you folks seem to be on top of keeping an eye on all those old goals and strategies. So once we've got all the, all the updated inventory information, which we kind of, we have the, I mean, the, in the, in the document that we say, we kind of break it down between kind of what the responsibility of KVCOG would be to pull together, and then what the responsibility of the local community would be, because there's only so much information we can pull together from all the various different sources that's, that's good, but nothing actually beats kind of local knowledge. You can get census information, which might look good, but oftentimes, because of, especially in, you know, small rural main town is probably not too accurate, to be honest, when you're dealing with, with the kind of scale of things in terms of the census. So having that local knowledge, having the local information from assessors, from code enforcement, from just general local information is, is much more important, I think, to, to check and verify any of the general data sources that we traditionally use. And say, the, the major, the major middle component would be public participation. So that would be gathering as much information as possible from the residents of Reed Field in terms of what they feel the important, the kind of priorities are. It's, it can be different, I mean, you could ask for an opinion, you, you probably do want to ask for a, but general opinions on all the various different topic areas, but often is what would happen is certain, certain things are always going to filter to the top. People are going to have more interested in certain issues than others. So those hopefully will become apparent, and you can have a number of different strategies to try and get as much information from the, from the public as you can about how, how they want the town to, to, I was going to say, I was going to say develop in the next 10 years, but as you already brought up, I don't, I don't think it's necessarily invalid to say that a town, a community may just want to kind of stay the same, which is, like I say, is perfectly a valid position. But in order to stay the same, you, you, you still do need to plan for how to do that, because change is going to happen around, oh, change is inevitable, but if, if the town wants to try and maintain a certain feel or literal amount of open space or something like that, you have to, you have to plan for that in order to maintain a status quo in terms of, in terms of the town. So even, even if that, that does become apparent as a kind of overall idea, there's, it's still important to, to plan how to do that. So if you go out for, to the public and get as much information as you can, that would be the middle section, and there's various different ways we'd, we'd go about doing that, and we have done in the past. Either, you know, I mean, it's becoming, it's becoming more and more kind of, it's becoming easier for people to, in, in a lot of ways, to, people to give feedback through electronic means and otherwise, but we can still do old-school bean suppers, we can still do old-school postcards and, and paper surveys. It's, we, we will, we'll work at that and, and find out what the most, the most efficient and effective way of gathering that information would be. You generally in that middle period have at least one, at least one major public meeting for people to come and give their ideas. And the backend of that is, is using all that information and feedback is to formulate the ongoing goals, policies, and strategies of how to implement, how to implement the ideas that people might have come forward with. And I don't think it needs to be anything truly too much different from the old plan in order, because it seems like it'd be probably safe to say that the old plan has served you well, so you don't need to stray too far away from that, you don't need to reinvent real, the wheel and, and try and come up with any kind of radical new concepts, I wouldn't think. So that's the, uh, once, and then you, once you've got the, the goals, strategies, implementation ideas, and again, who's, who may be responsible for them on, on what time scale, that's essentially the three main components. Throughout this whole thing, you have to just, which we, we are very cognizant of, is making sure that everything is in there that the state wants to see. There's a, what they call chapter 208, which is the rules, essentially, it, it might as well just be a big list of what needs to be in a plan for them to, what they call rule it consistent. So once we, once there's a final plan put together, it's probably, the, the best way to probably do it is let the, is put it together as best you can, let the state review it, and if the state say that they're okay with it, then that would be the time then to put it out to the final public meeting, so.
So we do have to be in sync with the state's plan of comprehensive development.
Yes, if, if there's no, I mean, I was, there's not really much point in having a comprehensive plan unless the state rules it consistent. I mean, it's technically, you could still have one.
And when was the last state plan updated?
The, the last, the last one that we did.
I mean, I'm just wondering about our timeframe versus where the state is on what their metric will be for all the towns that have to go through this process.
A, a plan loses consistency technically after 12 years, so I think '09 was the last official adoption and consistency finding, so.
So they're much more up-to-date than we are.
So technically, you've, you've got to what, 20?
One.
2021, give or take, in order to, to, you know, have a new, a new plan found consistent. So that's, that's the time scale, and, and we generally look at anything between 18 to 24 months as needed to try and, to try and complete the whole process. Obviously, that's split over two budget years, we, we always anticipate that, so any kind of cost estimate that we give is, is with the understanding that'll be split over two fiscal years. We give, hopefully, the cheapest rate possible, especially with Reed Field being valued members. You get, you get the membership rate, it's subsidized by our other funding sources, so we have the state contract, which allows us to just use some of our time and just charge the state in general for assisting the town with the plan. We also have the DOT contract, which will pay for the entire transportation sections completely free under the, under our DOT contract. So that enables us to, to, to make some savings in terms of the price that we can offer. So that's, that's the long and short of it. I don't know if you've got any specific questions or general ones, hopefully, uh, be able to answer those.
I think we will have some questions perhaps as we, as we proceed. I think perhaps tonight what we're going to do is, without any motion, is just simply direct the town manager, or give a sense to the board, I should say, rather than direct, to put this into your budget considerations over the next two years. So there would be a piece in this year, and then that allows us to finalize a contract. I'm very well-disposed towards KVCOG, and I'll say that upfront, because as a member, this is valued use of our membership, and so I think we'd be, like, from what I could see from just a little bit of the pricing issue, it's probably around a third, third off savings for us somewhere in that vicinity.
So membership has significant value.
Well, it should, it should have its benefits, and, and it does. And we do pay dues, there is a.
Yes, we do.
A fee to KVCOG.
So I have a question, if you're done.
Yes.
Okay, and it's Joel?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Catherine. Have you done, had much discussion with Eric about what we have available to you in reading through the ending part of the proposal? I mean, it talks a lot about if the town has this capability or has these things available digitally, et cetera, et cetera. Did you factor any of our capabilities into this proposal, or not so much yet?
I don't think, this wasn't meant as a final price, right?
Uh, I mean.
It was an estimate.
It was, it's a good faith estimate, if there is, we're, we're very much open to if there's negotiation and think, like you say, if there's something that would make, the town can perhaps do for itself and remove some of the cost, we can certainly, we can certainly talk about that. I mean, I, it was kind of pitched, kind of trying to know about, as much about the town as I could do in a reasonable amount of time in terms of your general capacities and general size, so if there's something that, that significantly reduces the need for our staff time, we can certainly talk about making some discounts to that.
Okay, and is that something that, so that isn't quite answered, but I'll go on that last comment. So as we go through the process, we, it looks like we would not be committing to a fixed price because, as it said, if you end up taking longer and you have more meetings, then there would be a higher meeting cost, as if it went quicker and there were fewer meetings, then that meeting cost would go down. So it's not going to be. So it's not going to be a hard price. It's going to be an estimate based on how much we actually use you?
The, the hard price comes in that we would set a contract for a certain dollar amount which would be not to exceed.
Okay. We would have a not to exceed contract.
And if it comes in under budget, we only charge you, literally only charge you for the, for the hours that we, that the staff and materials or mileage or whatever it might be. We literally only charge you for what we do.
Right.
And not to exceed. If there's, and that's, so you know, if right up to, as soon as it hits that dollar amount, you'll not be charged any more. And just in terms of if it does, you know, if we hit, if we hit that dollar amount and the plan's not quite finished, we'll basically, we'll basically pledge to finish it under our own cost.
But if you were planning for 20 meetings and we ended up needing 40, I assume we would have to renegotiate that.
Yeah. Throughout, throughout the whole process, we, we're very, we keep an eye on obviously where we up to within the budget as opposed to where we're up to within the process. And if, if something becomes kind of apparent that it's not matching up like we thought it might, obviously, we can, we can have discussions at the time and we're obviously happy to make an amendment to the contract if needed.
Okay. Because we have a lot of stuff that's digitized and our maps are correct?
Yes.
Quite a bit of G S resource.
And we do quite a bit online here with polls and questionnaires and we do a lot here of in-house printing. We do our own town reports. When we send out a mailing, we tend to print it here and send it out, bulk mail. So I think a lot of those things fit into the options that you had listed in here. So I'm very comfortable with this proposal.
I'm looking at the total number. I'm wondering whether there's a front-end load in terms of startup expense so that we can plan by fiscal year what our costs would be.
Um, yeah.
Split it in half? I mean, for budgeting purposes, how do we, how do we plan for this exercise?
I think it really depends, you know, certainly at what point during the fiscal year that this would begin. It's reasonable to say that, you know.
It would start in July, I'm assuming.
Yeah, well, in that case, if you, I mean, if your fiscal, your fiscal year starts July 1st.
July 1 through 30.
Same as ours, okay. So, so for, you know, for the sake of argument, then if it, if it kicked off right at the perfect time in there, then I think it's probably, probably reasonable to say that a 50% split over the years.
50/50, there wouldn't be a heavier front-end cost because of startup?
I don't think so, no.
A lot of the cost is in printing and map production and meetings probably take place later than earlier, maybe, but.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, maybe I was thinking about that, then I probably, I would weight it maybe slightly, maybe 55 to 60% in the first year.
Okay. So you go 60/40?
Yeah, I mean, if, if I was thinking about it, then probably, yeah. But like I say, it depends on.
But the formalized contract?
The formalized contract?
Would specify that?
Um.
Cost breakdown?
If you wanted it to, I mean, it depends if you, if you needed to.
I'm a budget nut. I would, I would like to know what it's going to cost us the first year and what it's going to cost us the second. And if for whatever reason we need to reopen for additional expenses beyond a fixed agreed-upon price, that language should be in there too at the end of the second year.
Well, I mean, if we, if we say, if we have a not to exceed contract, and like I say, if, if we, if we hit that mark and we haven't finished the plan, like I say, we make a good faith pledge that we will work with you to complete the plan regardless of.
But I don't want to, I don't think, I don't want to give away the taxpayers' money here in a public meeting, but we certainly don't want to hang the cog out to dry for unforeseen circumstances. If the plan is going along and we're getting what we want, but there's an additional cost in that out year, we ought to be able to talk about it. And by the same token, we ought to be able to talk about the fact that we're coming in under budget and that, that bottom year, that last year payment should reflect whether we're under or over in terms of our basic $20,000, $21,500 assumption.
Well, let's do this, okay? In the budget process, we'll go ahead and address this. And in the budget process, by addressing this, we will get the proposed contract.
Okay.
And then that'll allow us to, to basically.
To plan.
Well, I think we would then vote to accept that contract contingent upon passage at town meeting. And so that gives us the ability to negotiate the contract, if you will.
Yeah, and I think your comments were very well taken as far as the, some specificity, but also protecting all parties, town and KV cog. But I think that they have a standard format, we have a standard format, we'll probably merge the two and come up with something that works for everybody.
For everybody.
Yeah.
And it'll get reviewed here.
I have one question, then I can make a motion.
Yeah, I do want to dispense with this topic.
Do you have anything you can offer us, words of wisdom or a template on best way to approach this at this stage of how to ask people to vote yes for it as a budgetary item and to join into the process?
Absolutely. I mean, I literally brought with me this evening a list of 12 points called the advantages of having a comprehensive plan, to be honest, which kind of puts out the kind of, the main, main reasons, legal and otherwise, why it's, why a town really should have a consistent adopted comprehensive plan. I mean, I'm happy to, you know, just in terms of the general KV cog service to come and talk about the comprehensive plan and make reference to this and hopefully convince people that it's a valuable service. I would be happy to do that. I'd be happy to, if needed, to even speak to it at the, at town meeting if someone wanted to.
Well, we don't have that kind of town meeting in Reedfield. We have a secret ballot.
Oh, okay, so it's a hidden ballot.
But we do, we do have two joint meetings of the Budget Committee and Select Board that are televised as we are tonight. And that would probably be the time for that because people tend to come out for that.
I'd be, yeah, I'd be more than happy if you, if you'd like for me to come and speak and answer any questions about the, about, you know, the necessity and good sense of the comprehensive plan and the, and the breakdown of the costs and such if needed, yeah.
That'd be awesome. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the town manager to consider this proposal in our budget process pursuant to the conversations we've had tonight.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to ask town manager to please restate that.
I'm not sure. To consider this proposal in the budgetary process pursuant to the conversations that we've had about.
Thank you. So my comment on that is I don't think it's a needed motion, that I think the sense of the board gives enough direction, but obviously, I'm going to support this because that's part of my sense of this. So all in favor? So thank you.
I just think it's stronger to the public that we're
It is.
With emotions.
It is. I'm more informal sometimes, I guess.
You're welcome.
Joel, thank you.
Thank you, Joel.
We look forward hopefully to working with you.
I'd very much like to see those 12 talking points.
I have two topics.
Because I think we're going to be.
If we give one to Eric, he can give it to all of us.
No, he's going to get them all.
Thanks. We'll move on to 20050, which is old business, to conduct a second reading and approval of the traffic and parking ordinance. It's gone through its first reading. In your packets, I believe, you have with, and I'm going way back now because obviously we're pages back.
Yes.
Get it to talk with what page it is.
I think the final adjustments based on the first reading were in red, if I recall.
Page 37.
Red and a couple in green for a transcript.
Yeah, you have some Christmas colors.
Christmas colors.
Yeah, I don't know how that happened.
Okay, so were there any, and let me clarify just for the public in terms of this reading. The Public Ways, Traffic and Parking Ordinance of the Town of Reedfield is, it's, the state tells us that the Select Board passes that ordinance. This is not an ordinance that goes in front of the public. That doesn't mean it doesn't get input and adjustment and so on and so forth, but it's not, it's not an ordinance that enacted by public. It is indirectly, let's put it that way. So are there any questions or further notations in regards to the draft?
I just want to be triple clear that everything that is crossed out is being removed, correct? Whether it's in red, green or black?
Semi. So if it's in, if it's crossed out, if it's crossed
So much for clarification.
If it's crossed out in green, it's being removed from that section and moved to a different section in part or in whole. So the items in green were moved in part or in whole to the enforcement section later on in the document. But if it's in red and it's crossed out, it's gone forever out of the document.
And if it's red and not crossed out, it's new language?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Or moved language?
Yeah, it could be moved.
Or moved, or moved, yeah.
Okay.
But it's.
But it's not as original.
If you were to print this out, everything that is in red that is not crossed out would be the ordinance.
Would stay.
Yeah.
And I will say just that the board gave me some very good direction last time, almost a year ago, to review this. And I did have to make two to three changes that were substantive, a few that were not substantive, but the, the two major areas that were covered were the question of what to do about areas of the town that we might have ownership or an easement or a right-of-way, but aren't a road proper and how we manage those. So things like our parking areas by the Mill Stream Park or the trailhead off of, is it Fog Road? I think there's one there. So areas where we might have an easement, but, and even the parking lot here at the town office. So I did address that, I think, pretty succinctly and hopefully completely. The other area was the question of enforcement and how clear it was as to what type of enforcement was being envisioned and how that would proceed. So I believe that's been addressed as well. So those are the two main points that came out of that last review. And other than that, the document's very much the same.
Right, and I would further note, unless I'm, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but this particular ordinance could be addressed in less than a year if something came up.
It could be addressed next Select Board meeting if we find we don't like.
Exactly, because it's a Select Board ordinance.
Yep.
It allows us a certain amount of nimbleness, if you will.
Quite a bit.
In terms of dealing with it. I'm going to move or draw adoption of the, get that back to the title correctly?
Public Ways, Traffic and Parking Ordinance?
Yeah, that.
Public Ways, Traffic and Parking.
Ordinance of the Town of Reedfield.
That's what it's titled on each one, on each page.
Oh, I should have just looked at the bottom, you're right. So I've made that motion. Could I have a second?
I'll second.
Catherine has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Well, just a question.
Sure.
Not having any fingerprints on this document at all. I'm wondering whether or not it's the sense of the board, whether I should vote.
You should vote.
Okay, thank you.
Your fingerprints are, you've read this and looked at it
I have read it.
In your packet and you're duly elected and you don't have to be at the first reading to do the second reading, as far as I'm concerned. Any, any negative to that?
Nope.
No.
So all in favor? Okay, we have a new ordinance on the books.
A new revised ordinance.
A revised ordinance. You're, you're correct.
It would improve.
I don't want people thinking that it's just new.
Got a lot of the old in there.
Yeah, a lot of the old stuff in there.
A lot of black.
And some things brought together.
Okay, so the next item is to conduct the review of municipal investments and retirement plan options with Canobec Wealth Management. They're not here, so for the 30 minutes that we have, and we've kind of gone over on a couple of other items, I don't want to necessarily have no discussion on this, but I, we obviously can't have the discussion with Canobec Wealth in terms of asking questions and so on and so forth. So maybe Eric, you can just give us a sense of what we asked and what the next step might be?
Yeah.
And then I can try to plan and.
Absolutely. So I did talk to Sam Tippett on the phone today. He had a family emergency, was not, could not avoid not being here.
Okay.
So he did send his apologies and he said he'd be more than happy to take this up at the very next Select Board meeting, if that's what you chose. So that is an option. He did give me a quick summary of where things stood, both with this and the discussion around the possibility of Canobec Wealth serving in the additional capacity as managing our retirement plan or plans. So generally with the portfolio that we have for our trust funds, which is what you have in your packet with the wheels and all this extensive data showing what's been happening, this, this shows some dips and some increases, but year-to-date, we have seen a very healthy increase in the, in the funds. I was talking with Ralph, actually, this afternoon and we kind of went through it and these funds are very close to the parameters that we have established in our policy. However, there's always room for change, room for improvement and room for consideration of the mix. And LPL and Sam Tippett are both there to meet our needs and our expectations. So if there is discussion and interest in changing the mix that we have here, they're more than happy to execute that for us. That being said, we did have a little bit of a drag early on with some of the bonds that we were invested in. However, we've, as you can see, done, done quite well year-to-date. So that's my summary as it was presented to me by Sam and I tend to concur with it because I can't argue with the numbers. But as far as the finer points, those will have to wait for, for Sam, I'd say.
How does it compare to before we had it managed?
That I couldn't tell you.
And what do you mean by that question, Chris?
We're paying a fee to have him watch this account before it was not being managed.
Before it was automated, basically.
And when was that before?
April of 2019, I think, is when we started, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, so we are or are not paying a fee currently?
There's a legal fee.
We are paying a fee.
Okay.
It's a managed fund now.
It's a managed fund now and so.
And as the, the whole premise is, when the market is volatile as it can be, they're watching this for us.
Well, they're watching it under a certain number of parameters of what they can do, right?
Exactly, but if.
Especially based on the size of your commitment to them.
Right.
No. If you pay a fee and you have a small account, it is watched just as closely as the guy up here who has this much.
I'm a skeptic.
I'm, I'm in the business.
I know you're in the business.
I'm in the business.
And I've done this myself.
The SEC will come and get you or something like that.
They haven't gotten enough of them.
What I want Sam to tell us is, is there a cash fund that can pay more than what we're getting for this one? I mean, Fidelity has a cash fund that pays 1.8%. We have people leaving their banks and coming to Fidelity and opening a cash account. They must have something that will pay more for a money market than.
And can someone tell me where on here, because I haven't been able to find it, what our market fee is, our management fee?
It's a percentage that you pay at the end of each quarter.
Okay, so it's in the weeds. It's not.
Well, it may not even be in this report.
It probably is not in this report.
There would not be in this report.
This is a returns report.
Yep.
Doesn't show you that low.
So, but I will ask that question for Sam to tell us how much we may have paid and what our fee structure is, so.
Right, because if you're looking at, at your income.
It would, it would probably, it came out of his income probably because he can't, he can't make it drive if you don't take the expense outside.
Yeah.
Right, so I'd like to see what that is because most of our gain was due to the market, which is due to, which is due to the economy. And so, you know, it's how well something's performing and that's what we're having it managed for so that we can take advantage of the best opportunity. opportunities. I think part of, so to me, I, knowing that fee is critical to making a comparison.
Well, I believe when we, did you sign, you had to sign a contract, right, Eric?
We had to sign an agreement to switch to a managed account, yes.
Right.
Yep.
And that should spell out the percentage. And I, and I had said-
But it would be good to know the actual, the actual number.
Yeah, I, I think it was like 1.5, sounds familiar.
1.5%, I think it was.
That sounds familiar, but I'll look into that.
1.5% of what?
At, at the end of a quarter, what your value is?
Of the pot.
If, if it was 296,000, you'd take 1.5% of that and divide it by four, because that's 1.5 a year.
Right. Okay. And I think the last time we had this discussion, we were talking about, well, the first thing was that we wanted to make it so that it was more robust, which we did by that last action. But we also wanted to look at, is this the best investment house, so to speak? And I think we also were having a discussion about our, what's the name of our account, Eric, where our money goes and it rolls, and it-
Sweep account?
Yes.
For our bank?
Say it again?
Sweep account.
Our sweep account. And we keep quite a large balance in that, is that correct?
We do, and that, that's separate from all this. However, we have been talking-
Because you have to be liquid.
Broadly about the need to, really the need, at this point, in my view, to invest some of that to, to get a return for the town, because we do have-
And that's where we talked, perhaps, about a fidelity instrument.
Yeah, exactly.
That gives you check-writing capability.
Yep.
Right. And so I think part of what we're doing here with this is, one, we have to realize that we're not married to LPL. We have no problems with them currently, but it's always in the interests of the town at large for us to review what our options are, and make sure that we're doing the best we can. And also to look at something we could do with a sweep account, because we have approximately a million dollars that we're not spending.
Yeah, over the course of the year, Teresa and I tracked the, the balances compared to prior years. Over the past three to four years, there hasn't been, I don't think, a single month where we've had less than a million dollars in the bank. So, certain times of year, we could easily invest a million dollars plus for, for three to six months. Other times of year, we may only want to have 500,000 in there, as long as, in some capacity, we have the ability to pull some or all of that money out. I would think that the best way to approach that would be to modify our fund balance policy to maybe include some references to how much of that and how liquid, I guess is the term?
Well, if you put it in a money market, it's liquid, but you're going to get paid at Fidelity 1.8%.
That's right, yeah, because they've got the, yeah, yep, yep. So that would easily meet the criteria that we're talking about, yeah.
Right. And so I think, I think we need to be maybe approaching that, this topic from that bigger perspective right now. And the reason I just want, I don't want anyone to be shocked that we have a million dollars sitting in the bank that we're not using, that's a policy we have, and that's so that we don't ever fall into the situation of not having enough money to pay our bills, because we're counting, you know, we have to have money when taxes come in, taxes come in twice a year essentially, and then money has to go out regularly. Every four weeks, we pay-
$309,000 a month.
Right, to the schools.
Plus.
And we have many other payments. And so, we have to make sure that if tax payments didn't come in as planned, we have enough cushion to continue paying our bills. And that's a policy that's very clearly stated in our, our policies and procedures.
You also have to have enough in undesignated fund balance reserve to handle unanticipated emergencies. And usually, the rule of thumb is 10% of your budget number or certain number of mils, so that you can step in after a hurricane or a blizzard, and you don't have to have a town meeting to spend money. You can get right to it and, and deal with things and hopefully get your money from, back from FEMA later on. So, there are a number of reasons why that, that, if it's a million dollars, if it's 10% of what our total budget is, then we're, then we're safe. That's, that's a reasonable number. I wouldn't want to go below that, although state parameters probably would let you go to five or six. I don't know what the state rules are here.
Well, we use two months as our policy, which in this town is we-
Works out to buy.
We work to keep two months of operating expenses.
Yeah.
And so that's how we get to that number.
And that includes the school, and so that, that is another issue, too. That, the school budget-
It's $600,000 right out of the gate.
Well, it, it is, and the school budget increasing over the last 10 years, 6% every year, where actually, we have a lot more buffer than we used to. And there's a question in my mind about how valuable it is to continue escalating that account, you know, that balance in the same, I mean, we're obligated to cover the school balances in the event of a default or whatever else. But my question is, do we really need to be following that, their trajectory with our reserves? Because that does, it puts a bit of a stifle on us to actually-
It's part of the overall consideration, but once your fund balance gets to a point where you feel you have that latitude-
Yeah.
Then you can begin to whittle back the mill rig. You give the taxpayers a credit based on that, and you take more out of the undesignated fund balance to fund your budget on an annualized basis. And you still maintain a basic fund balance that gives you the reserve you think you need to have.
We would have to change the policy to do that, though. That's kind of what I'm getting at, yeah.
This is, this is where I think we need to have some, some discussion. And in terms of, in terms of investments, I think we have a, we have a two-headed issue here. One, town monies, cemetery trust funds, the sweep fund, all of that. That's, that's a consideration that requires different analysis. And then, we have the pension plan. That's a, that's a whole different game in terms of, you know, do we have a plan advisor? Do we, do we have a, do we have a plan? All of these things are out there on the table, and I think we're a little bit behind the curve right now in terms of both considerations. And I was, I was looking at the, at the pie chart, hoping to have a conversation, but I see one of the, one of the things we were invested in here, it's a marginalized amount, but we're in mortgage-backed securities. Some bad stuff happened with those things not too long ago, but we still have mortgage-backed securities in our portfolio. Maybe they're the one, you know, the one element that, that didn't go in the tank. And I've read the statutes, so I know that the state of Maine allows you to buy corporate bonds. It allows you to, to buy municipal bonds, allows, allows you to buy out-of-state bonds if you meet certain parameters.
Right.
All of those, if you're risk averse, make me just shake like crazy. I think at the very least, as far as the town situation is concerned, we need to revise that 10-year-old investment policy, which basically just mirrors and quote state statute. I, I would very much like to see us in a position where we are in insured vehicles for the lion's share of our funds. And then, with the advice of our treasurer, our finance manager, whoever ends up managing our accounts, our town manager, if there are opportunities out there that meet the rest of the guidelines for state statutes with the approval of the select board, then we say yes, go ahead and do it.
Well, we have a, an ordinance that has to change, changes, we can't change it if we don't change that.
Yes. I, I think, I think we need a comprehensive review, and, and I, in terms of at least the town portion, I would, I would move back to a more conservative position in terms of insuring our investment vehicles, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't take away the option that state statute provides to us to invest in alternative, higher revenue yields with maybe a little bit more risk if you meet the state parameters. But I would not just allow whoever our investment company is to do it without the blessing of the town, without the recommendation of the town manager, our finance director, and a final sanction by the select board.
Well, unless, unless we give them a discretionary-
Sure.
Agreement, they can't do anything without talking to Eric.
And we did not do that.
I don't think that's in there.
This is a discrep, this, this is-
This account is a discretionary.
It is, yeah, he does have-
He does that.
Well, it's part of this, I mean, and, and you can look at it both ways. It's part of the safety mechanism to ensure that if we are finding large losses, or they're finding large losses, that they can react and stop that prior, prior to us.
The way it's structured right now, it's reactive.
No, they should be thinking ahead.
Yeah, well-
I mean, my, my boss sits there with a Bloomberg, a Bloomberg-
I would love to, I would love to put my full faith and trust in that, in that concept, but I'm a conservative guy when it comes to town finance, and I, I have reservations about this, about the way things are going right now.
Well, if you look in this, everything that he purchased, he did when we went to a managed account in April. Most of these were purchased on April 10th. Nothing has changed.
They did do some adjustments in September, but it was minor.
Yeah.
Can I take a motion to extend the meeting by five minutes?
I'll make a motion to extend the meeting by 15 minutes.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Hopefully now we only have to do that once, and then before then.
Thank you. You can always do better.
I just think we have a lot to talk about, and we're probably not gonna-
And we're not going to get it done tonight.
We're not going to get it done tonight. And I, and as I say, I think the pension plan is a whole different kettle of fish.
But you, you could make an umbrella that could, with one company-
We could.
Could take care of.
But in my discussions with Eric, I get the sense that in terms of a plan administrator for the pension fund, that's not a road you necessarily want to go down.
It's not, just because of the cost.
And there are a lot of reasons why, because that law, pension law changes by the second. There's no reason why our finance officer and the town manager wouldn't be points of contact for people that are plan participants. But ultimately, you need somebody that is going to keep track of these things that keep you in sync, make sure your plan document is legal, and gives you, gives you advice on, on how to amend it from time to time. We don't have a plan document now.
Right on.
And we don't have a, we don't have a plan administrator. We have a template now for a plan document, but it's going to take some time to, to massage it so that it fits what we want to do. I think it's a pretty good baseline document, because it's pretty conservative in a town with a similar demographic and, and revenue stream. But that's going to take some work. And I would also suggest that, yeah, an umbrella is good, but I would like to shop everything in terms of who manages our town money, who manages the pension plan. In order to do that, I think part of the equation requires that you have a pension plan document and a plan administrator. There's no reason why that plan administrator cannot serve dual purposes. And, and the plan administrator could also be your neutral third party that looks at the investment history of the investment firm that you select to make sure that their options are performing up to snub. You can ask, you can ask the company that's doing it for you to evaluate themselves, but I don't think you're going to get an objective analysis in that regard. You're going to get, you're going to get, you know, here's how we're doing, and, but I don't think you're going to get the view from 20,000 feet as to whether or not these individual components that have been selected to raise revenue for you and protect your status are actually the best ones there. So, yeah, I like that. I like the idea of, of an umbrella. And you get an economy of scale if you can find one oversight group that works through the manager and the finance director to do these things and make sure that we're getting maximum benefit, and every year shops to make sure that we're getting the lowest load and the best benefit. And when we go out at the outset, we have, we select, we select a number of companies that we want to ask to quote the service.
Yeah, we should put out a request for bid, just like we do everything else.
Yes, yes. Not, not a newspaper ad-
No.
But a group of select companies based on an advisor's recommendations. And that advisor helps us with an in-house-
But you want to pay somebody to help us find somebody.
I think, I think we're going to need that long-term.
I don't think so.
And I think, I think the problem is going to be that in-house management is not going to, is not going to be sufficient. And I don't think that we have the skill set in-house, with all due respect, and I've done it myself, to, to, to vet various companies to provide this service to us.
But I, I, you know, they're not out to get you. You don't, you don't have to-
No, but you also, you also need to be in a position where you know how the game works, and you can negotiate, and you can evaluate proposals. Because no matter how hard you try, when you get these proposals in, they're not apples to apples.
Well, they're- I think a good, a good place for this is probably not going to be tonight.
No, it's not. We've already spent too much time talking about it.
And so I think we definitely need to put this on an agenda for fairly soon. But the Prime Motor Group saga that is playing out in Maine now is a big holding company.
Oh, yeah.
And it looks like they probably are not doing things on the up and up. And they are very broadly invested, with lots of pension funds and personal, individual funds. And so, I mean, there's, there's great merit in having that 20,000-foot view, just to say, you know, you don't want to just take LPL's evaluation of LPL. You want to have-
Exactly.
Some other source. Doesn't necessarily have to be a paid person, but you want to have some, some good way of looking at things from different lenses.
And it would have to be on an ongoing basis for your pension plan.
Yes. Well, you want to evaluate any polit, any financial policies periodically.
Annually.
Annually, or semi-annually, or every six months.
Just like we do with the auditors.
We did it, we did it quarterly.
Right, with the auditors, et cetera. But I think it's-
But we're doing it right now with LPL, right?
Right. And I think it's really important that we look at this sweep fund and that we look at getting that into some sort of a different account where it's going to pay us something.
That seems to be low-picking fruit.
Yeah, mm-hmm, yep.
I mean, that's easy to do.
Right, right. It doesn't take a lot of effort. So I think it would behoove us to authorize the town manager to investigate our options and have something happen on the sooner side, whereas this other one, I think, is going to take a little bit more time. And maybe we can have Chris and/or Ralph work with Eric.
Well, we're both, we both raised our hands.
You're both already doing that. But maybe you guys could give us some feedback on, okay, so we're going to plan on having a proposal to you guys by February or something, so that maybe it can be part of the budget process.
Well, part of the problem is, the old 401K company never left a plan. You don't have a plan for that.
Yeah, so we're dealing with legacy issues. There's no question about that. And I think that a, any, any new start is, is better than where we are. So the question is, how do we, how do we do that?
We have to pick up and move on.
Yeah, yep.
And so we need to actually do that, is what I'm hearing. And I'm not an involved party in terms of doing, I mean, certainly in terms of listening and making decisions with you. So-
But this, this is an ongoing, we're-
Right.
Yeah, we're, we're at the bottom of the curve.
Right. So let's, let's accept that that's where we're at. But let's try to create the expectation that we're going to try to deal with a sweep account on a faster basis.
Yeah, I made a note of that.
I just don't see why we can't-
Right.
-do that by, by our January select board meeting.
Yeah.
And we should all reference back to the investment policy and make sure we're all jiggered there as we need to be.
Right.
Jiggered, that's a financial term, right.
And then if Chris and Ralph can get us information, if you two don't agree on it, I'm okay with that, and then all of us coming up together, because different points of view are fine.
Well, we're not always going to agree on everything.
We're in basic agreement that we need to do something. And that's a good jumping-off point.
Right. And then if you come back with two different ways to approach it, then all of us will sit here and decide how we want to do that.
As far as the plan document is concerned, we now have a baseline document we can start with. All we got to do is amend it to fit what we think Reed Field wants to do. And we have an investment policy statement.
Okay. So we set with this conversation?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you for all the input and so forth. And we will make that sweep count a priority and continue with the review moving forward and giving up- and giving us more information. And I guess what I'll do in terms of whether Sam is coming in January is, I'll just coordinate that with you and how he would fit into that.
And in the...
Because we're also starting to get into, we don't have a budget presentation right off the bat, but...
No, but we're, we're running right up into that quick.
We don't really want to throw him in that late, late mix.
Well, we're, 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 we're in a contract with him.
We are, and we, and we have two, we have two, two meetings in January. The first meeting, I think, would be entirely appropriate to have him come and present.
Yeah, that's probably the right one, which is the next meeting.
Yep.
So I do want to just let the public know that we are doing the annual review and contract renewal process with the town manager. Online, there is information on how you as a citizen can give feedback. We've had letters go out to employees, to board and commission chairs, and key con, key vendors or partners. So that's all happened, and what I need to do is go ahead and schedule with the rest of the board, and that's what I wanted to do tonight, when we would do an executive session to do that review. The, all materials are slated to be in by the 16th. Typically, they don't take a long time to, to, to deal with, so I'm hoping that we can do Eric's review next week.
What night did you have in mind?
I had in mind, gee, funny that you should ask. I had in mind Thursday, the 20th. Is that right? Is that the 20th?
Oh, that's the Friday, which one is?
Well, then I must have had the 19th in mind, right?
Well, let's see, tonight is the 9th, so 9 and 7 is 16, so the 16th, 18th, 20th, or Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
Ask the math teacher, right?
Half majors, scary.
That's an OCD person.
And this, this is, you know, all of our executive sessions do open with, the public is invited, so we, but this is not a meeting we need to necessarily have at 6:30. We could have it at 4:00 in the afternoon, or, you know, at 5:00 or something. Typically, this has been less than an hour meeting.
Yeah.
Well, we would meet for a certain portion of time to go over the information that we've digested or whatever. Actually, Dennis and I have the biggest piece, because we do the community part, and, or potentially the most feedback.
Did you divide it out from doing what?
Yeah, did you get the email?
Yes, it was in our email from Eric. You were doing the business, vending partners, et cetera, again.
Yeah, and you actually don't, we're just using the list from last year.
Okay.
So that's already gone out, right?
Yep.
Yeah, so...
And we've already taken some back?
What's that? We've already gotten some back? Good. Great.
So the 19th is Thursday.
Well, and I mean, that was just a date I'm tossing out. I mean, I'm available other dates.
That would work for me, but it, I need to be done by 6:00, because I can't miss choir practice before...
Oh, that's right, too.
Christmas.
The Christmas sun...
Well, the 18th's available, too. What I wanted to do is make sure that everyone on the board had, felt they had enough time. I'm comfortable with the 18th, or 19th, or 20th. I think the 17th is probably a little bit too fast.
How, how much time do you have on the 19th?
I could do 4th, I can, I need to leave at 6:15.
Oh, it won't be that long.
We won't.
No, and I could be here by 4:30.
You could be, can we meet at 4:30?
Ralph?
I'm your easy guy.
Okay, so that's a yes.
Old retired guy, I can, I could be here anytime.
4:30 on the 19th?
Unless I'm on a gurney somewhere.
And if I recall, when we've done this in the past, this will be Ralph's first time, but I think we did it in 30 to 45 minutes.
Yeah.
Because the expectations that we will each come with are, having read the...
With your segment.
Our segments. And we did a fairly general report out rather than specifics, unless there were particular specifics that needed attention.
Right, and we generally start that meeting with that review, and then we invite Eric to join us.
And then you typed up something for him formally after the meeting?
That's correct, and afterwards, it's my job to consolidate the information.
But we gave him the results right that evening.
Right.
Okay, so we're doing this in a one meeting this time?
We're doing it in a one meeting. That's what we did last year.
Okay.
That worked out well, I had good feedback, and it was concise.
We took 30 minutes, and then we spent the rest 30 minutes with him.
Yep.
Perfect, I think that works.
So that's the way I would plan it.
And then that gives Ralph an idea of what we're doing.
Yep.
Because you're the new guy.
No, I'm not a new guy. I'm an old guy.
And then you'll charge me with writing the report and giving it back to him.
Yes.
And at the same time, we will have his, his contract.
Yes.
Yep.
So, should we make that a public meeting then? If we want to deal with the contract that night?
I mean, we could deal with it later, too.
Well, we have to make the end of it a public meeting, but we would just be just stating...
Right, but when I...
When's the contract expire?
Well, it's actually rolling, so...
It's a rolling contract.
It's not, it really could be done anytime.
Pending renewal, it just rolls?
Yeah.
No, we add a year. It's a three-year contract, and we roll it forward a year.
Okay, so it's one-year renewal options.
That's basically right, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It, it went from a fixed term to that rolling term, which I think is better serves, better serves the district.
Well, yeah, it gives you some flexibility.
Yeah.
So, is what you're saying is, could it wait till January?
It probably could.
You wouldn't have to have the public then come out on a different night of the week or be prepared to tune in on a different night?
No, that way you could, that way you could formally notice it and put it in the context of a regular meeting.
I prefer to be in a regular meeting context, yeah.
Okay, great. Can I take a motion to adjourn it? One minute over.
I move that we adjourn, second.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you.
I did it a minute ago.